Okay, you are good. Thanks, Michael.
All right. Good afternoon, and thank you for viewing the April 27 meeting of the Arcata City Council. As you know, the city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of COVID-19 virus. We want to thank the community for their efforts to practice social distancing and isolating as requested and needed. The county order to shelter in place has been extended, and renewed order underscores the importance for all people to stay at home to protect the entire community and healthcare system. And also recently, there has been an order for for all indoor locations for people to wear masks or in other situations where they can't do social distancing. Just one quick reminder, if you're not actively speaking, please mute your microphone to allow better sound quality for everyone. Second, all votes will be taken through a roll call vote. Lastly, public comment was accepted by email and in writing for both specific agenda items and general comments. Comments on specific agenda items will be read by staff during the agenda item. You can email public comments to PC@cityofarcaded.org now if you want them to be read and be recorded as part of this meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pereira.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Patino.
Here.
And Mayor Winkler.
Here.
All present.
Right. Do we have any general public comments that have been submitted?
There were no public comments submitted under this agenda item.
Right. Next is old business, a review and continue the proclaimed local emergency related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic and direct city staff to continue to update the council with access to be taken to respond. Maybe start with a staff report from the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So today's item before you is that we are asking the city council to continue the local emergency related to the coronavirus COVID-19 and direct staff to continue to take actions necessary to respond and to protect public health and safety during this emergency. So I'd like to give you just a brief update on actions that we've taken between your last meeting, which was on April 13 and through this morning, April 27. And the mayor already commented on the order that Humboldt County Health Officer put in place for mandatory masking. So that has also been implemented in all of our city facilities and throughout city-owned parks and open spaces as well. In terms of our employees are required to wear face coverings while working in public areas where social distancing is not an option and inside city facilities at all times when the staff are outside their individual office or work areas or in those more common areas such as break rooms, coffee rooms, et cetera. The two sheltering, emergency sheltering locations that we discussed during your April 13 meeting are both up and operating. It's a combination of funds from the county through FEMA and OES that are supporting the porta potties, hand washing stations, garbage services at those sites, and then funds that came through the governor's office specific to what we call the Continuum of Care COCs in Humboldt County, that one in Humboldt County that is then supporting the funding of Arcata House Partnership to provide three meals a day and operational support to each of those sites. So although both of those sites are at this point fairly full, there are a few individuals in those sites that we are working to move into what's called Project Room Key, which would be sheltering in the hotel locations and might free up a couple of spaces in those. But if not, the sites have actually been operating very smoothly. There are definitely changes that are being made each day in the field, but we're working closely with Arcata House Partnership on those. I just wanted to let the council know that we did have a city employee, Tracy Watkins, who works in our Environmental Services Department. She is one of our kind of primary team members that has been working for the last couple of years on updates to the city's emergency plans. She had the opportunity to do a full two-week shift in the actual EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, being led by the county for this emergency. She will continue to operate out of the EOC for two to three days a week as the pandemic continues. And it's just really been a good opportunity for her to get some hands-on, on-the-ground experience to be able to bring back, not only to help the city manage this emergency, but future emergencies as well. The city submitted its first expense report to FEMA and CalOES. I included a copy of that to you if you have questions. That was really throw it all in the report, very preliminary numbers, so we will continue to refine those and provide better fiscal projections and analysis as we move through this. And I expect that most of the expenses listed in there are not things that are going to be reimbursable to the city. At this point, you know, despite three federal stimulus packages, there is not a lot of reprieve yet for city governments, at least those directly that are under 500,000 people. So even this third stimulus package kind of omitted any direct help for small cities at this point, but we're throwing it all in our reports, at least to be considered and reviewed. And then I also listed in my update to you sort of some of the immediate spending reductions that the city has put into place. So we do expect significant decreases in both our sales tax and our, what was colloquially known as bed tax or TOT tax. So we've taken some initial steps internally to really reduce our general fund. So one of the pieces that I wanted to bring more specifically to your attention, and I am going to just share a screen here, and I have emailed this to the council as well, is a review of our paving projects. And we do have city engineer Katry on the Zoom call if you have specific questions for him. But we know that the council has already this fiscal year approved. So this is the three major paving projects for fiscal year that we're in right now, 1920, that ends June 30, 2020, as well as next fiscal year, 2021. As the council knows, we do typically plan projects for a year or two, and then we typically bid projects utilizing two years of funding to try to get, you know, a quantity discount or the largest project that we can, the largest sort of benefit to the community to pool our projects in a two-year increment. So we had the Bayside Paving Project. This is a project the council has already awarded this bid. The entire project bid award amount was 1.35 million. We also had a grindout in inlay project that bit, the bid itself, we have not awarded yet for, but would have for a total cost of $608,766. This is the project that was pulled from a calendar about three weeks ago. That was before the council to hold until we can start to complete some of this analysis. And then the third project is what we call the Slurry Project, and this is, you know, the pavement that goes over typically the areas that we do the grindout and inlay and really the repair of the road. And that slurry we bid is an entire county, so the cities of Eureka and Fortuna, Trinidad, Arcata, and Humboldt County all go in and try to pool again our resources to get a better quantity pricing on slurry. The city's portion of that project, county-wide project this year, is $482,414. That project is being managed by the city of Fortuna. We rotate around to manages that project, and they have not awarded that bid yet. So what staff did is they went back and they reviewed all three of these major projects, and they looked at how much of the actual general fund where we think we will see significant losses in revenue could we pull from those projects and reduce those projects by that amount? And yet still maintain the requirements of what we said we would do with our SB1 funds and then the utilization of our gas tax funds that are specifically earmarked for paving projects. And so just to orient you to this, to this table, and we can talk about it in more detail at your council meeting on May 6. But the recommendation from staff would be to look at the Bayside Paving Project that you have already awarded, but we have not started and we have not made payments on, and reduce that from the Streets Fund or in essence, the General Fund contribution to that project was 1.147 million to reduce that to 848,000. So let me, sorry, let me correct myself. The Streets Fund is a combination of both the General Fund and SB1 and gas tax money. So in essence, it would be stripping the General Fund portion from that project. So it'd be an overall reduction in the project by 22%. So we have a similar scenario for the other two projects that will be the grindout in inlay. So this is a project that will be on your May 6 calendar for approval at this reduced amount will be our suggested approval amount. The total project initially came in at 608,000, of which 579,000 of that would have been from the Streets combination of sales tax and gas tax SB1 funds. So our suggestion will be in essence, again, to strip the General Fund portion of that away and reduce that project by 43% to a total project amount of 348,000. Similar with the Slurry Project, again, reducing the sales tax portion of what we would have allocated to that project, recognizing that sales tax likely won't come in, at least at the levels we expected, by 35% from an original potential project award of 482,000 down to a final project award of 313. So you have to take no action on this today. I just wanted to introduce it to you so you had time to think about it. The only action that actually will be before you will be the consideration of the grindout and inlay as a formal action at this point at your next council meeting. But we certainly could discuss the other two projects as well, and there will be some reference to those. I'm going to stop quick to see if you have any specific questions about that that you would like to ask myself or city engineer Katry before we move on.
Right, Councilmember Watson. Is he still there? Councilmember Pereira?
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Patina?
Yeah, I have a question about the Bayside Project, the number one project, Bayside Paving. And so we reduced this by 22%. So what exactly is being taken out of it? I'd like to know.
Natri, could you answer that?
Yes, I can. So good afternoon, all. When we awarded the project that had an additive alt, which was in the amount of around 108 or 115,000 dollars. So that will be the first element that will be taken out of the total project. And remainder, we will not be piecemealing it, so we are still detailing what exactly will be removed. However, we are planning to remove portion of the street, so it will not be the Bayside Road. The project is titled Bayside Road, but it does include other portion of the streets in that area, which includes Jester Avenue, Margaret Lane, Crescent. I think those are the main street that includes. So we will be eliminating portion of those street. So currently, we are not proposing anything to remove from the actual base side road. It will be portion of Crescent Avenue that will be removed and portion of Margaret Lane, which was additive all for the project. So that'll be in a combined of total reduction of 22% for the project.
That's great. Thanks. I just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
I don't have any questions at this time. And let's see. Why don't you proceed, Karen, before we take public comments if we have any that have been submitted?
Okay, I think that's actually all that I wanted to cover. Actually, I'm going to go ahead and ask Director Loya just to give a quick update on our business loan program, the emergency loan program. Give him just a second to pull it up there as I put him on the spot, but he did have some current numbers that I saw come in this morning.
Yeah, good afternoon, council and mayor. So just, just real quick, I wanted to give you the numbers on updated applications for the Business Resiliency Emergency Loan Program. We've had a total of 46 applications and inquiries to date, so that's people who've asked about the program and/or submitted an application. We've had 11 applications made that currently we have additional information pending, but 22 applications that have been forwarded to AEDC. Eight of those funded, so eight businesses have received our $10,000 in funding, and six have pending approvals, with the remaining eight being processed currently. We're continuing to work with our regional partners with, through AEDC to get some of the Headwaters Fund money that has been approved for use for this purpose as well. And that approval dates back to the March 20 date. And so any of the loans that we've made, we'll be able to tie in those additional Headwaters Funds and expand the program, basically taking our $250,000 and turning it into $750,000 with the new approved two-thirds, one-thirds match that the Headwaters Fund is approving. So it's a, it's a real, you know, clear process for folks. You know, we've been reporting back is that they've, you know, that it's a fairly simple process to get through, and we're getting these loans funded, some of the ones that are coming in that are, you know, in good order, the application is in good order, they're getting funded within a week. REDEC, similarly, the Rebodee Region Economic Development Board is also funding the program now through their funds, so they're not using our funds, but they're working regionally. The program, and AEDC is doing a similar program in other areas in the region as well. So if you have any other questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
If not, that concludes every part, Mayor.
All right. Do we have any public comments that have been submitted on this overall item?
Yes, there was one public comment submitted by Colin Fisk, Arcata resident and executive director of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. "Thank you for the hard work that you and city staff have been putting in to keep Arcata as safe and healthy as possible during this difficult time. My comment is about the temporary short-term measures the city can take to help further ensure the health and safety of residents during the response to the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly, particularly those who are walking or biking either for exercise or to get to and from an essential job or other essential trip outside the home. I sent you all an email a couple of weeks ago containing some suggestions. This comment is intended as an update and to further encourage you to take action. Here are a couple of simple steps I hope the city will take in the near term. Number one, work with Caltrans to reprogram traffic signals on Samoa Boulevard so that people on foot don't have to touch a button and risk picking up coronavirus in order to cross the street. This can almost certainly be done through programming without investment in new hardware. Also investigate options to address the same issue at pedestrian-activated hybrid beacons throughout the city. Number two, with less car traffic and more people on foot and on bikes, re-prioritize public street space to allow adequate social distancing. Options include, A, temporarily widen sidewalks and/or create temporary protected bike lanes. G and H streets are obvious candidates for this kind of treatment. They have lots of pedestrian traffic, narrow sidewalks in most places, and extra car capacity. B, work with residents to close low-volume residential streets to through traffic and allow free pedestrian use of these streets. This model does not restrict the use of cars by neighborhood residents on the streets, but reduces traffic and lowers speeds, allowing walkers more safety. C, work with law enforcement to conduct public education for drivers about the importance of yielding to pedestrians, including possibly using plainclothed officers to test yielding at crosswalks and educate drivers who fail to yield. Other communities around the country have already done all of these things and much more. You can see a list of other communities and what they've done on the website of the National Association of City Transportation Officials. These measures are simple, low-cost, and important for supporting local health, safety, and quality of life during these trying times. I hope you'll consider taking action soon. Thank you. And that concludes the public comments received for this agenda item.
Right. Are there other comments from, from councilmembers at this time?
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah, Michael, Paul here. I really support G and H somehow sidewalk widening, especially close to downtown where, where there's a lot of parked cars and you're squeezed into that narrow space. So, um, as a temporary measure, it would be great to see expanded sidewalks on both sides. It means you lose parking on one side probably for a while. And G and H also are in those streets that were supposed to have sidewalk widening 15 years ago or so. That's why we ended up with those big planters out in the middle of the street on H. Or in the, in the lane on H. So it, it's, it's something that was planned to happen, that never happened, the sidewalk widening, and maybe this is an opportunity to practice what it would be like. Thanks.
Other comments from council? I do not have any comments. Well, I think the idea of making the traffic signals so that they, but you know, have to be pushed by members of the public is a good idea that I would like to see implemented if we could request Caltrans to do that, if they have control of that. And, and I also agree with Vice Mayor Patino that temporarily widening, widening the sidewalks on G and H could be helpful, but when I was walking there myself yesterday, I found that was a problem in order to maintain a social distance and having to walk out in the street.
I agree as well, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. You know, Michael, I just want to say one more thing. The signals, changing the programming and/or turning in those H, HG and K signals to motion activated. You know, so that when you walk up, it, it, it sees you and it starts the sequence. Either way would work. So somehow we need to communicate that to Caltrans, I guess through Natri. So thank you.
Right. I have a comment as far as the, as the face covering directive from the county health department. And what I would like to see would be to encourage or to require businesses such as grocery stores or drugstores to post signs informing people of the, of their directive from the county.
Michael, I've noticed that most places that I go into now have that, that warning from the county on their doors, banks and wherever, you know.
So it may be that it's moot and we don't need to do anything and that they're already doing that, but it would be one thing to, to check to make sure that all the businesses where this would apply are are informing their customers that this is, this is the rule for this store and for other stores.
I, I think it really makes a difference when the employees are masked up. People get the picture. When, when the employees are not masked, um, the clients or the, the customers don't look at it so seriously, in my opinion.
Karen, does the, does the city have enforcement authority or, or responsibility as far as enforcing this ordinance within the city of Arcata?
We do. We work to support the county health officer, you know, in her orders. And so the chiefs meet with the sheriff regularly too, to talk about consistent countywide enforcement. And, but our police department, as well as our city engineer and community development department have all done, and environmental services have all done some level of enforcement throughout this, you know, throughout the emergency around some of the social distancing requirements.
Do we have any feedback since Friday when this order went into effect on compliance?
The only feedback that we've received so far is that there was a dramatic change between Thursday and Friday. Everybody really seemed to know that the rule went in on Friday, and it seemed to be a noticeable change. And we started to see more signs, as Vice Mayor Patino indicated, larger signs anyway, on especially the grocery stores, you know, indicating the mandatory masking. But we can do some better assessment of that between now and your next meeting and report back as well.
Okay, that, that sounds good.
So on this item, we will need a motion to continue the local emergency and direct staff to continue to take actions as necessary. Someone's ready.
So move. Make a motion to continue the local emergency and direct staff as necessary.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Watson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pereira.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Patino.
Hi.
Mayor Winkler.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimous.
So any further comments from council before we adjourn?
Thanks to everybody. We're all suffering through this.
Well, thanks to everyone and, and well, I think that just speaking for myself, I think there are many people who, who are in terms of losing their jobs or in terms of being homeless or in terms of living in confined spaces that they're having a much more difficult time than I do, and I certainly appreciate their efforts and empathize with the situations that they're in. And that we will do what we can in Arcata to obtain whatever funds that we can to help reduce the impact. So with that, we are adjourned.